To this very important dialogue in town hall meeting on what we call pipe in. And it's about the value of water. There's no doubt, I'm sure that we would all agree, that there is no more precious resource other than our human resources of that of water, not only in our city, province, country, but globally, universally. In fact, we just reading something or saw something over the wire yesterday that spoke about the eight pound water in Jupiter. So it's about our universe. Now, there's no doubt that London is in a fortunate position of being right in the middle of one-third of the world's supply of fresh water. So I think we have a great appreciation, not only about our place, in our country, but as we discuss with you this very important matter, and it's the value of water. You know that our city council and through our committee chaired by councillor Usher is seized with the challenge of being able to come up with a funding formula that really speaks to not only the service of water, because I think we all take for granted that when we turn on that tap in our homes or in our businesses, we expect the water to be there. How it gets there, how we price it, how we value it, I think is part of the dialogue that we want to have with you today. And we've got some exceptional circumstances that will put it in the context of the value of water. I want to introduce my fellow colleagues that are here today. I think we've got a majority of the council, so we can't pass any resolutions. I should tell the office person that they've all been casually invited, but we happen to be at the same place at the same time, and this has not constituted me. Councillor Bright, please stand if you recognize a whole year applause to the end, councillor Brown, councillor Beckler, councillor Henderson, councillor Paul Hubert, councillor White, councillor Van Meerbergen, and our councillor Denise Brown, and of course, our infamous Chair councillor Usher. Thanks. As you can see. A very important, very important issue to all of us and all of you. I want to just before, because I want to tell you that we're streaming this live, and it will be posted on our website, because we think, feel that it's important between now and October the 22nd, I believe, is when a report will come forward to our civic works committee, where in fact, our administration will be presenting a number of options for us to consider. And I know that the issue sometimes comes down to what's the price of water? What's the water rates going to be, or wastewater rates, or sewer rates? And that is an important consideration, but I want to put it also in this context, is that I think Londoners were challenged many, many years ago, as was business, to do their part, because conservation is a very, very big piece of our strategy. And I want to applaud the citizens of London and the business people of London specifically for doing their part, because over the number of years, I think you have, in a very, very big way, done well, we vastly, to value water, and you conserve. And you conserve, in most cases, we are now consuming 50% less water than we used to a number of years ago. And that is a tribute to all of you, and the value that you put on that precious resource that we will be discussing today. I should also point out too, that London is at the forefront internationally of looking at water. We've been chosen, as you know, this International Centre of Action, who are working, and in fact, are working with a number of municipalities and universities, and the private sector, to ensure that water and all those new technologies that may exist also may very well be part of the answer, and to solve some of the challenges. So without any further ado, because this is about your meeting, this is about your input, we will and have questions that have already been posed to us, and we want to get to those questions. We also hope we will get to some of the questions that you have. But let me now introduce councillor Harold Usher, who will introduce our guest speaker. Harold?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Macdonald, a gentleman who is one of Canada's best-known science journalists. For the past 20 years, he has been a host of Quirks and Quarks, and he is CBC's National Science Correspondent. For many years, he operated out of Toronto, but recently, he has been operating out of the studio in Victoria, DC. What amazing things technology can do. Bob is a Canadian icon and a flowerbed, a triple-digit winner of medals for science communication in Canada, the Michael Smith Award for Science Promotion, the Stanford Fleming Medal from the Royal Canadian Institutes, and the Maclean Medal for the Public Awareness of Science from the Royal Society of Canada. Bob Macdonald holds six honorary degrees from universities in Canada, and in 2011, he was made an officer in the Order of Canada. Ladies and gentlemen, please have me welcome our guest speaker, Bob Macdonald.
You were a lot better than Peter Manfred. We had Peter here for we think London, and he did a great job. But Bob, I think you put this whole issue into a context that I think to most of us is surprising, and you're absolutely right, challenging. And so I think now we get from 400 kilometers up there to something on the ground, something a little bit closer, it's called London, Ontario. And I'm going to ask John Brown, our city engineer, to speak to you a little bit about and illustrate how the water system, as it is today, how it works or doesn't work, and how it is that, as Bob indicated, is that we've got to be hopeful, challenge ourselves, define those creative solutions as to how we can keep our water clean, precious, how we can conserve it, how in fact, we can make sure that it's sustainable, not only for ourselves, but our whole area. So let me now introduce our city engineer, John Brown, who's going to take us through the presentation.
We've got about 30% of the water rate here in this stand. Well, thank you, and good evening, and thanks for joining us this afternoon. This is an incredibly interesting topic for me. It's a part of my life, in terms of what we do here in the city of London. And my job here is to, of course, thank Bob for creating the program, and talking about the water from our global perspective, and then bring that a little closer to not only Earth, but into London here. So my job will be to make it relative to our situation in terms of developing this new grid structure that we have in the last. With that, I'm going to use this. First, tell you a little bit about our water system. And our water system in London starts with two great plants. We are, in fact, the only city that I'm aware of, at least, that connects these two great lakes, Lake Jordan and Lake Erie. We do so through the water that supplies us, through our primary water supplies systems, which supplies not only the city of London, but 13 other municipalities on route. The water itself is, there is no better water than what we're pulling from those lakes. It is an incredible source, to say the least. That's my part of the story. The story gets bigger and further, and we're all about the whole source to finish. As you heard Bob mention a little bit earlier, we've just recycled this water, and that's what we do here inside the city of London too. That's what all our infrastructure does as well. In this case here, what we've got shown is Jeremiah, who's representative of what we're dealing with our Thames water, and this is all about the Thames Clearwater Revival. We've got our wastewater treatment plants, and our storm effluent that comes from our storm management pump that discharges to the Thames River, which is our natural force for moving water through the grid system, and again, recycling that water itself. And this story began a long, long time ago, in 1878, London Water was formed, and its primary function at that point in time was really to provide fire protection. We had cholera and other issues that invoked the other end of our treatment processes, both that are on the wastewater treatment side, and protected us against further disease. So they're very important, and of course, they're extremely complex. Inside of our systems, we've got a roughly 4,600 kilometers of pipe. And that pipe will bring you from here to Miami and back, if it was laid in hand. It's a lot of pipe, you know, 20,000 animals, we've got six wastewater treatment plants, 36 pumping stations, we've got seven huge pumping stations on our water operations inside the city of London, four huge reservoir complexes as well. All in all, it's a significantly huge array of infrastructure. And that infrastructure costs time and money, and it's really what drives the rationale for our model. In this picture, here you see an old picture, a 48-foot rooming, and then today's view of it from the other side. So our total system value in terms of current dollars runs about $4 billion. Our current annual revenue associated with the water, the sanitary, and the storm systems runs about $135 million. And out of that $135 million, I'd say in general sense, is divided into three elements. Firstly, it's our treatment, whether the treatment for the water comes from the primary supply systems, and you have to pay for that, or to our treatment on the wastewater side before it's discharged through the Thames River or through our storm systems. About $45 million of that is associated with that. Another $45 million is associated with that huge array of infrastructure that takes water to the customer, or takes sewage from the customer. Huge array. And that 45, the remaining $45 million is what we reinvest back into our system. That $45 million that we reinvest into our system is what we have to support our system. You guys can do the math, okay? If we look at $45 million, we've got about $4 billion in terms of assets, that's given us about a 90-year life for our system. That 90-year life is not what we have for our system. We have components in our system that last better than 90 years, they'll last over 100 years, some of our pipes. But we have an awful lot of components that are not going to ever get there, okay? Our current estimates of what they're costing is, sorry, our current estimates of the value of that infrastructure and its longevity is probably in the neighborhood of 40 for certain points, 50 for a lot of the other components. You know, you can't get a pump station or pump that lasts 50 years, it just doesn't do that for you. But certainly, certain components of it do not that way. But what we really need to do is take that average, that 90 years, and drop it down to what we think the overall average of all these components is, which is closer to 70 This is the story of our revenue base. It's not a great story. In 2001, we noticed a significant change with respect to our revenue base. We started to notice a significant change. These things are trends, and I can tell you from my experience within the system here in London, which is close to 30 years now, and from the information that I've researched before that, that trend that you saw there declining, that red trend, was always inclining, always going down. What that represents is our existing great revenue base, and at this point in time, it's going down. And to make our system sustainable, we have to at least get something that moves horizontally across. Now, if we were to have a 100% fixed base system, that trend would have increased, at least by the goals within our community. Very similar to the tax assessment that you see there, you know, the tax increases based on the assessment itself. You've got more people in there, and more homes, more industry, that assessment basically goes up on your growth. I want to talk a little bit about the impacts of the fixed base system, or something we call them a flat rate type base system, and its impact on conservation. Sorry to interrupt these folks. But the conservation incentive under our current model is extremely high. We have a totally variable-based system at this point in time. That means if you consume 10 cubic meters of water, and you discharge 10 cubic meters of sanitary, okay, your routes are right there. You reduce it by one of those cubic meters, you can reduce your fixed charges, or sorry, your charges associated with that by 10%. Well, in a flat rate base system, the incentive to conserve is very low. We know that, and I've had the experience working in other municipalities that have had a fixed grid system, a totally flat base system. And those folks in those communities are very careless about how they will use water. There's no incentive for them to not use, or to use less water. And the reverse is true, when you have a totally variable incentive, there's a very high level of potential for those to conserve. What we've noticed since 2001 to 2012 is a 26% reduction in demand between those years. And those reductions in demand are a thing that we preach, that has been an ideal thing. This is the best thing that ever happened to us. We flipped the switch, we were really looking now at the social impact of wasted water in many ways, and we're conserving, we're using what we're returning, actually to the older days. We use what we really need to use to survive. That impact of those reductions has deferred, at this point in time, at least 100 million of dollars of infrastructure costs. That cost comes to us in terms of, for example, an expansion to the primary side water treatment plant that we wasn't paying for right now. Many of our infrastructure components that were there for many years will simply not be able to meet their needs. I want to talk a little bit about pipe value, before we put too much burden. The pipe value is all about what it costs to service our customers. And it's a very simple calculation, there's no tricks, no hidden issues here, it's all about just simply knowing that the amount of the service pipe that feeds that particular customer group, divided by the number of customers, basically. You know, is that the cost of it, times the length, divided by the number of customers that feed it to that particular site, to arrive at what we call a pipe value. And I talked about this a little bit, because I need to tell you about how our infrastructure pipe value is assessed by the city of London. What you see in red there, okay, is what the pipe value is. That Icy High underneath that stands for industrial, commercial, and institutional. And on the right-hand side, there we've got residential. Now, we've always had this issue inside of London about one customer group subsidizing perhaps another customer group. But what I want to tell you is that in terms of the name and the infrastructure that's there to service the industrial, commercial, institutional group, it represents about 20% of the overall system cost. The other 80% actually is by the residential sector. Now, I tell you that for many reasons, but when you think about the context and the makeup of number of customers for our system, we've got about 110,000 customers. About 100,000 of those customers are residential, so it makes some sense that the infrastructure that's needed there to service the industrial, commercial, institutional side is typically bigger, bigger infrastructure. Now, when we look at the volume, you know, this is where some disparities have been raised in the past, in terms of the volume itself, about 60% of the volume of water that the city sells to its customers goes to the ICI sector. About 40% of that is going to the residential sector. And then we look at the revenue, the blue side, okay? And the revenue that's generated, about 40% of revenue is generated through the ICI sector, and about 60% of the revenue is generated through the residential sector. So we've got that the one, we've got 40% of the consumption by the residential, 60% of the revenue. 60% of the consumption on the ICI side, 40% of revenue. I want to talk a little bit about our fixed costs. Now, fixed costs in our infrastructure are the parts and pieces that make up our system that don't necessarily degrade or change with respect to how our water is used. I'm talking about the pipes in the ground. Our pipes are typically those pipes that feed, you know, the industrial and residential sides, and they don't really change with respect to the amount of water that's actually passing through them. They also include things like our buildings, even in some cases, our pump bases, and a lot of the other elements that are associated with the treatment side on the wastewater side as well. You know, but the majority of it is the pipe. Terms of the variable cost, those are the costs that actually change with respect to how much consumption we take. It's the cost of treating the water, the electricity cost of pushing the water from the primary water supply device to the city of London, and the cost of the treating that the wastewater and our discharge itself. So of those costs, about 74, 75% roughly is a fixed base cost, and of course, the remaining 25% is variable cost. This is the way that our current model is structured. Right at this point in time, we have about 1% of our water wastewater system that is covered up with a fixed base charge. The variable component, of course, 99%. This is what we're probably looking at in terms of a model coming up, so this is a sneak preview, but we are definitely looking at some form of fixed cost that is represented of the sector that it services, and then a variable volume metric account. And what I talked about earlier about the fixed component there is, we do not want the fixed component influencing the opportunity or the desire for us to continue to conserve. We talked a lot about economic development, and I want to just put in a word or two about some of the subsidy perhaps that is allocated towards economic development. But the picture becomes really clear, you know, without economic development, we can't even afford to do anything in our systems. We've got to keep the folks in London working. So from a political perspective, it makes a lot of sense, and I'm established, so I don't provide a political perspective, but it does make a lot of sense to encourage what we can to have growth. Water users in this case, or sanitary users in this case, locate the city of London. Industrial development looks at one thing primarily, matters what the cost of utilities are. If they can find it cheaper in other municipalities, as close to buy-ins go on, as all the other resource and entities that are looking for, they're going to locate there. We need to be very competitive here. Also talk about managing balance. And in this case here, this is within, I would like, these are actually two different sectors that are operating within the, that can supply a very common residence, okay? On the right-hand side there, what we have is essentially a commercial entity, it's a bolt-measured townhouse complex essentially. And on the left-hand side, what we see there is a similar area, okay, that illustrates an individually metered, individually costed sector as well, that is going to end up paying significantly more for its water use. In this case here, those, you're just on the left-hand side, they're residential, they'll be subjected to about $150 more cost per annum within the current grid structure, the way that current grid structure is exposed. Other than that, the infrastructure servicing both of those entities is very similar. The other big issue with respect to this particular portrayal here is that the storm charges that we assess are done on the basis of the number of meters. I don't know who picked meters, and I don't know why meters was picked as a reference point, point to illustrate the cost associated with the storm system, but it was. But the entity on the left, those individual residential, they assess a flat rate on a per resident basis for their storm charges, and their costs are roughly 36 times that on the right. So again, we have inequities within very similar cost locations that we're going to hope to adjust. There are disparities within a customer group as well. And these two industries, A and B, are very similar in many ways, in terms of the infrastructure issues to support those two industries. And I'm talking about the water infrastructure and the sewer infrastructure, the sewer infrastructure associated. Industry A is a warehousing type of industry, has very, you know, has very low water needs, so pays very low sewer fees. In this case, that industry is subjected to about 19,000 dollars worth of water and sewer charges on a permanent basis. Industry B is a water user, a water consumer, and in this case there, while the infrastructure is still the same, okay, to service both of those different industries, that industry B is, it pays expenses for water and sewer on a permanent basis of about $2.8 million. So you can see that there's a significant disparity between the two ministries. Further disparities, again, as I mentioned earlier, there's a, this is intersector disparity, but in this case here, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, the residential sides are paying on a flat rate basis for their storm charges. Institutional, depending on the size, will pay on the basis of the area. In this case, the, that particular entity will pay about the same as A residential homes. So again, a significant disparity. And through this process, what we're really trying to do is come up with a fair and equitable process. And where there's disparity, or where there needs to be incentives or whatever throughout, you know, from one side to another, then we're going to, first of all, draw it in on the process that tells us what the real value and what the true cost of servicing is, and hopefully, we'll have our political bodies make the decision on what, who, or what area is incenting perhaps the other one. So this is true, the price we pay for water does not cover its costs, does not reflect its true value. At this point in time, there are issues like those that are connected to the system that may be gone for a period of time, and, or those that perhaps do not use much water or wastewater, but are still getting the service of the system. We're still getting a very similar process associated with whether or not they're making, sorry, they're getting the fire protection, whatever she said, or associated with the services that we're providing. So that's pretty much it for me at this point in time. My presentation unfortunately was a significantly drier than what I was there. I do appreciate your time and my use of some of these charts and so on and so forth, and hopefully, it drove the message home in terms of trying to achieve that true cost and that real value for the services essential that we're providing. Thank you.
Thank you, John, I think. We have an interesting term that we're using in the council these days, and I think Julie every once in a while, once in a while, reminds us of this. It's called the conundrum, it's supposed to be a good wine, but obviously, you now see the conundrum or the challenges that we as your representatives face with regards to the information that John has provided you. So, but now it's your turn to have your say, and it just has to start here, and that's all. I know that many of you have managed to ask some questions of Julie, and we're going to deal with those particular questions personally. I have Bob and First, I'm going to have Bob and John join me up here. Because Bob will ask questions and John will answer them. Or if there's some political questions, I may ask one of our council members to also be involved. Then we will go to the audience, and I'll have Harold take the mic and pretend that he's, I'll host, one of those guys. I'm trying to remember one of their names that runs around like crazy. Trying to get to the questions. But I will say right from the outset, I know some people may have some other issues around water, and I will not be dealing with issues of fluoridation. I think it's a decided matter of council. Council has and can at any time open up that discussion, that issue. What I would like from you today and those questions around is to talk a little bit about the challenges that John has just talked about to get your input on that particular matter. So let's go to some of the first questions that we received from, that were emailed to us and to Bob and John.
It feels like Bob the last year. Big job, that's on the way. And I asked you ten bucks for a flight, so I did it. These are not my questions, but these questions I would send to Julie and email before it passes me to you, until they came to yourself first. How do you love this water rate currently match up with the rest of Ontario?
Good question, right? That's what I'm supposed to say? No, it is a good question. Currently, in the residential sector, our higher-end modern users are just below average, the average cost in the province. Our lower-end users, those that are using probably less than ten cubic meters per month, are paying about thirty percent less than the averages. From an industrial, commercial, and institutional side, the industrial customers are probably one of the lowest in Ontario. We pay about forty percent lower than the average rate in Ontario. And from the commercial side, we're running at about twenty-five percent more. So remember that economic issue that I still bring up.
So are you comparing it to Ontario average? Or are you comparing it to other cities of corporate class?
That, yeah.
So how would you compare the city to Windsor or Windsor?
Well, you know, in this case, Windsor is a very interesting example because Windsor has a very high fixed rate in our charge. And so it's starting with the others.
Okay, what's the goal of the new model?
Well, as I tried to portray, and only you folks know how well I did it, but what we want to arrive at is a fair, equitable model. So it's one that is based on what it costs us to actually service that particular sector. And when I say that, I'm not saying that we're looking at anything that matches the fixed and the variable rates charges that are something. But certainly, it moves towards that process.
Okay. Why are residents paying more for water than industry and industry?
Well, again, it's very similar to that kind of earlier slide that I brought up related to those fixed charges. And the reality of it is that we have a lot more infrastructure that's associated on a per-resident basis than we do on a per-industrial basis. So the costs of servicing the residential are higher.
That's another interesting thought. We look at a global perspective. Canadians use, what is it, three-hundred liters of water per person per day? And in Africa, it's something like three liters per water. Yeah, people, I've been to Africa, I've been to a lot of different countries. But you see how far they go to get water. They have to walk half the day, and what they get is brown, and you know it's not clean. And we're so fortunate. So what do you mean by consideration for one customer group over the other?
Well, there's, in some senses, you know, it's a perspective that we do particularly enhance or reduce the cost of the particular sector group. And I'll tell you that by saying in a very short way that with the industrial side, we do support the industrial servicing costs. The development costs associated with the industrial side are at this point in time picked up through the rate payers. So that is one incentive that we have to hopefully encourage industrial development within the city of London.
Okay. What's a storm charge?
Storm charge is essentially a flat-rate charge, and it goes towards the costs associated with the storm system. It's a catch basin, you know, there's about ten dollars a gallon that's associated with the storm side, you know, about thirteen hundred kilometers of piping, the storm facility management ponds, anything that's associated with the storm side itself.
Did you? First, the climate modeling system says that as the climate gets warmer, we should have more severe storms, you see that?
Yes, we've been very active with respect to our climate change issues here in London and undertaken a huge amount of study with respect to what the climate change impacts according to. And we're pushing those into our development plans.
Okay. Here's a question for Bob. Well, it's from each other. Okay, this summer we painted our, well, I was going to ask this. This summer we painted our pool white. Then Bob tells us why the water pool is blue? Because water is blue. It absorbs red. Water actually does have color.
It does have color, but only on a large volume. So the white pool will look blue, and that's also why the earth is blue. It's just the nature of water. You do the same thing with grass. If you make grass, you can see what I'm doing, but if you made it really thick, it looks kind of green because of the way the light goes through. And blue is a shorter wavelength of length than red, which is long, and it tends to scatter more easily. It's also why we have the blue sky. So what's its color? Red, green, or red?
Why is wine red?
I am a low-water user. Why would I have to pay more for my water when I use just three cubic meters of water?
That's the, could it question in many cases, low-water users, as I mentioned a little bit earlier about the subsidy from one area to another area. And we have to understand that our entire system is essentially variable-based at this point in time. In other words, that cubic meter less is a cubic meter that you're not having to pay for. So in the case of someone that's using about three cubic meters, that is not sufficient to cover the cost of our servicing cost to that particular residential individual.
But then we come back to what you were saying before. What's the point of conserving? If I'm going to be paid more anyway, I'm going to use it.
Yeah, that's true. And when we think about the conservation from home, okay, there's different expressions, okay? And really, up to about thirty percent of a fixed rate, or thirty to fifty percent, depending a little bit higher, there is no impact on conservation effort. There is, you know, obviously some, as I mentioned with that graph that I showed a little bit here, the potential to conserve drops a little bit. Yeah, it's the true, the true costs associated with servicing that individual are not being picked up through three cubic meters. And the other side of that is that three cubic meters issue is getting up to the minimum charge at this point in time. And that minimum charge is really only related to the cost of producing a building.
So if you want to use a little bit of water, then you're well. That's odd, which is getting rid of. Yeah, yeah, definitely. Anyway, if we move to a flat rate, how would this be a low-water conservation?
Same issue, same issue, yeah.
Okay. Has the city considered rebates, incentives, or low-interest loans for customers to install water-efficient technologies like low-hush toilets?
Yes, we can, and we will continue to do so. But the primary focus for our conservation effort at this point in time within the context of the city has been on lead production strategies. So it's, you know, we have to deal with that. Most municipalities, the African municipality, the big hand of it loses about fourteen-and-a-half percent of the water that's pumped. In our situation, in London's situation, we're under ten, which is very good. So, you know, we've done a good job with our lead issues, and we have it under control. Now is time for us to move towards other incentive issues.
Okay. What's pipe value?
Pipe value, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, is a very simple calculation that looks at the costs that are needed to service a particular consumer group, okay? Otherwise, a wide number of consumers, it's that simple.
Infrastructure gap?
Infrastructure gap, that's a bit of a longer answer, but I got a way to catch. Infrastructure gap, okay, is what we're dealing with. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, I talked about the ninety-year average of life that we currently have right now. What we really need and what we really should be targeting is about seventy, seventy-five years' average, okay? The difference between those two years is what we call our infrastructure gap. And it becomes a gap because we don't have the financing to service it at this point in time. We talked about financial sustainability, and financial sustainability, and when we get to financial sustainability, we'll have the requirements in place and we'll be, you know, the finances will be there to manage that gap.
So you're saying stuff needs to be replaced, but you can't replace it right now, so you've got to wait till it keeps wearing out more and more features on the wall?
Yeah, and that's what we're doing right now with our financing plan. We have a financing plan that is actually a government-reliant financing plan for water and wastewater infrastructure in Ontario. And what that means essentially is that you've got to actually have a plan in place to manage that gap. So we have a plan, it's in place. In five years, hopefully, we'll be right there.
Okay. What about all the house taxes I pay? How come that isn't the end of the issue?
The sewage infrastructure at one point in time was a part of the taxes. But the water infrastructure that it has been, and with respect to sewage and storm, it's a utility, you know? And we deal with the utility on the basis of the revenue that's generated for that utility. So it's totally off the tax. Those taxes do not go towards the payment of any of our expenses.
So you operate like a cross operation. What? So who are you? We asked the same question.
Well, what we do is, I'll tell you, I tell you, everyone's just, every one of those residential and industrial and commercial owners, you know, we just, what we do is we, we produce budgets that are what we call full-cost budgets, okay? They address our expenses and our needs, and it balances with the revenue that we collect. You know, we're a nonprofit organization, so to speak.
Can't ask these things, they're history. How do you know that the city is managing the revenue collected? And how are you lowering your costs of construction operations and purchase of water?
Well, first of all, in terms of the issues impacting our costs, we have an external internal audit group that comes in to review all our finances. We have an internal audit group that does the same thing. And then we have a finance department that manages our funding to make sure that we're working towards with all the public sector accounting principles.
Okay, which leads to the next one. Does the city have some kind of financial plan you can apply to your project?
Yeah, I started to talk about this, but the government of Ontario requires a financial plan to be developed for all water and wastewater infrastructure. We can apply with that plan, we do have them. But in terms of knowing what the infrastructure is like, in about 2004, we did a full lifecycle infrastructure analysis, which really looked at all the infrastructure that we had in our water and wastewater systems, anticipated the life, okay, and then determined essentially what the cost to support that work. You know, and then basically identified a financial model that would address it. And that is of course what I mentioned, the sustainability plan.
Okay. And we just talk a little more here. How does the city collect funds from the new developments and attribute the new pipes to these rates?
There is something, I think I got the idea of course, Mark. Development charges are what's used to, and the city collects development charges for all new development occurs. It takes those charges and applies them to providing the type of infrastructure to feed those services to those developments that are ongoing. Inside the development itself, the developers will actually, you know, they will provide the infrastructure that's needed according to our specification and then take the charges and associate those and apply it to the new homeowners. So that's how this is done.
Okay. Just a couple more. Would it be possible for the city of London to consider an adjustment to its development charges for buildings which incorporate rainwater harvesting systems based on both reduced stormwater discharge and modernized water management?
Yes. No, it's true, and we are looking at a go-forward position. Actually, the timing for that is impactful. We are actually undertaking a PC review, and it starts actually next year. So it's actually ongoing now. We'll be finished by next year.
Good. And our last question that came from emails. Why, Tom, why wasn't the water rate structure fixed a long time ago? And why is it so urgent to do it now?
Well, there's a lot of reasons. Remember that red line you want to show you, that squib of the one that's going down? Well, that's not a very good model for which to continue to develop our infrastructure needs. I can tell you, the urgency is upon us now. People ask me in discussions in many situations in the past where I responded that, you know, it's a trend that we have to develop. Now, that trend, up until 2001, was always going up. So the model was working very effectively to that point in time. There's been a sociological change that's taken place. And subsequent to that change, the trend has started to drop down. Now, what that means is that the modeling that we prepared to that point in time is no longer suitable for going forward. And trends are not something that's discovered, well, I can't remember what topic here, but the trends are not something that develop openly. These things take many years. I mean, within the context of our time frame here, these trends, in some years you'll have a dry year, in other years you'll have a wet year, the consumption's really low. So, you know, you'd go to significant variation on a year-to-year basis. So trends aren't easy to observe, and it does take a little bit of time before you actually understand the trend and all of this. And since it's not going to be able to sustain in our future, that's where the urgency is at.
John, thank you very much. Okay. I may need to run out because I literally am running to the airport too much here, like that. So if I don't have a chance to stick around to the very end of your discussion, which I think is very important, I just want to say thanks again for coming out tonight and doing this very important issue. We know it hurts when you have to pay more for water, but what is the value of water on a global scale? Tri-sci. Thank you very much for having me.
Okay, I'm going to ask, I'm actually going to take some of your comments, take some questions. Could you raise your hand if you want to ask a question or come to see Harold this way? We'll have to get up, sir, with a standing order.
Hi. I would like to know why we're really not tapping into ingenuity in existing models of development where we tend to, for example, look at eliminating or decreasing the need for infrastructure so that we don't have long-term costs.
Okay, could you identify yourself, if you'd like to name an address that would be helpful to the recognition or continue to connect with you in some way?
And I wasn't expecting you. My name is Teresa Ruth, and I live in, I'm in Tua, New York. I think building our city differently, redesigning our city, developing policies that expect people to harvest rainwater, to reuse rainwater, to think of human, of humanity were as a resource that could create energy, provide nutrients to the soil. These are resources that we're just throwing away. And I think when we develop these subdivisions, we need to think with ingenuity and have self-sustaining subdivisions. When we redesign cities, our city, we also need to take these factors into consideration. Are we doing that?
Okay. Well, I think I can answer on behalf of council. You're absolutely right, all of them. Well, I think I can answer on behalf of council, you're absolutely right, all of those new technologies, those new ideas, how we build not only our inner cities, densification, but how in fact we can use our energy and water that much more effectively, efficiently from a policy standpoint. In fact, that's what we think London is all about. I know a lot of you are engaged to how we find our city. So part of your answer is yes, we're looking at all of those policies, but let me ask John to respond on a technical basis. So thank you very much for your question.
Thank you. We are taking a significant amount of technology in terms of redeploying processes that essentially reuse, recycle, and rebuild. I'll give you an example. Up until a few years ago, our incinerators had degree-one pollution control, just essentially burned the waste product from the bio system. What we are doing currently is we are recompacting, making it at least have to burn using fuel source as well. We have a new system out right now that we're reviewing that will actually burn lethargically. That means that the fuel that we have here is going to actually burn lethargically on itself, and will be able to essentially, you realize that fuel source to work within a steam turbine and to generate electricity. So, and of course, you know, and utilize electricity for exactly what we need to. Because it's great to be able to do all these new technical things, but we have to have an end source to be able to eat at someplace, and we have to make it so that it is a benefit to society and obviously to our systems.
Okay. Can I just say that I know that some of these questions are very comprehensive, and I know that I'm trying to get to many questions, but one of the things that we'll do between now and the October the twenty-second meeting is when our committee, civic works, will be considering, those questions that are being asked today, we'll make sure that we had and answered them that night more comprehensively. I know that you'll probably post some of your important questions and some of the answers, because a lot of them, this question was, encompasses a number of policy decisions that I can tell you that are either under consideration or that we've done, but I think we want to make sure that you have all the information, and those questions are very, very well put. Thank you.
This is a quick aside. Eric Robert, 59 Mariner Street, apartment thirty-five A. We represent, we need to build the second pipeline. And what's important is this, we're talking about infrastructure debt and maintaining infrastructure. And one thing that's come out of the breathing process of all in the last ten years for citizens of the city, which we deeply put that in front of control, is the government's got our city water infrastructure debt. We're putting on us as a tax debt. We're expected to have less than one percent growth over the future, yet we're still planning to sprawl out the southwest corner of the city, adding to our infrastructure debt for water, so it's taking over the tax force. They're asking us to pay more money, and I'm asking you as a mayor, as a city council, as a planning staff, to listen to your citizens. We are asking you to stop sprawling the city, stop putting more infrastructure debt on top of us as taxpayers. We'd like you to start doing this now so our children, our grandchildren don't have to come back and have a conversation on raising water rates in ten years' time. As a quick aside, the other thought of this which is okay, is that most of the local people in this city rent, and the rental apartments, apartments are probably the most efficient use of your rates, you'd like to call them pipe costs. Make sure that the debt is there protected from any large rate increases. Not much there we're gonna have to pay for. But let's start with the burden of this report.
Okay, thank you. Can I just add, plus the empty, the challenge between this, 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 this plan, of course, that's coming up in consideration. You're a planning committee, and obviously we do try our best as regards to planning in our city in the most efficient and effective. I think I want to repeat what John said, that new development, in terms of water, sewers, stormwater, wastewater are all paid by the home of fire, or in fact, the new industry says not, are not on a tax base, just like water, sewer, and stormwater is not on your tax bill. Previous councils have taken that out, and it is based on a rate-based system, not a tax-based system. The other parts of infrastructure that we're all fighting for is obviously a better yield from the beds in the province that give us eight cents on the dollar, and yet we've got fifty percent of the responsibilities, and we're supposed to try and give you all the services that you want on eight cents on the dollar. That's not sustainable too, that's why we're fighting with our federal grid governments for a new deal for each Dallas. Next question, please.
Hello, my name is Molly Knight, and I live towards forty-three Marine Crest here in London. I moved here nine years ago, and the first thing I noticed was my budget bill, because I live in a municipality in eastern Ontario. My question is, why are multifamily, in other words, apartment dwellers paying less? I was told this is because of the pipe structure. My concern is, I realize we need the revenue to maintain, to improve, and maintain our infrastructure. I don't want to even bill to my grandchildren, as sixty counties have done to current residents. So what I'm asking is, because apartment dwellers are considered commercial, therefore they pay less, because of the pipe structure, this fixed rate, which are proposing that a single residential homeowner must bear, should also be more involved in apartment dwellers? Because you have them a hundred years in a high rise, therefore you don't have to use them, you go, they pay the same fixed rate. In other words, divided tax-based, all residents in London should...
I think you've asked a very, very good question. I think John tried to answer the disparities between industrial, commercial, residential, and also within all of those categories, there are differences in these. Let me just quickly answer, you're right, it's not going to be only about residential homeowners paying and footing the bill and everybody else getting a favorable or favorable treatment. So those are part of the options that we've been considering, but John maybe might want to highlight that.
Hundred percent. And what we're trying to produce here is a fair and equitable cost associated with the servicing that we provide. And it will be somewhat based on, well, it will be based on, in turn, hopefully the pipe value that we designed earlier. So we're gonna see, we're gonna see some, some element of fixed costs, okay, in the same proportion, hopefully, assigned to whatever unit it is. So the cost that it is for us to serve that particular entity is the type of cost that it ought to be bearing. So, yeah, we're not, this is not a, this is not a practice to make a residential homeowner subsidizing another group. It's definitely focused on what it costs us to service that particular entity, and then transferring those costs.
Okay. Next question, please.
Frisco Fund, they might be getting foundation for London. And my question, whether it is a specific issue of reducing our cost activities and issues that are troubling with the cost down, why is the city paying for chemicals there or not?
When I'm answering that question, this is a very, very hard question. But you're asking a hard question.
This is a hard question. Why is, why are you putting pretenders to not be for creating the water? That's what we're doing, and we have to use cost.
Thank you. Next question.
First of all, I don't really understand why the, you know, the piping costs and all of that stuff has been separated away from the tax base, because it just makes sense to me that, you know, because I own my home and I pay property taxes, that really should cover the pipes, and come into my home and go through your streets and all that stuff. It just makes sense to me for that. You know, so that's the first thing. And it seems as though that cost has been transferred into the utility, and now you're trying to ask people who are, who are, you know, use it, pay for water, don't have the property taxes, you know, all that stuff, to actually, you know, pay some fixed costs, you know? It just, it just wouldn't make sense to me to, for the, you know, the fixed costs, like the piping costs to be on the tax base and to maintain your variable system. So they don't maintain the, so you can, so you can maintain incentive to reduce water.
John, I think you may have to explain this. First and foremost, most municipalities in Ontario, at least I can speak for Ontario, have separated their water, sewer, and wastewater as a rate base, not on your tax bill basis, just like your electricity is on a rate-based basis. That means you pay for what you consume, and what we're talking a little bit about today, what should be charged for that infrastructure that exists and how much you use. You've seen the chart that shows that we're only recapturing one percent of that fixed rate by virtue of the infrastructure. So it's already separated from your tax, I can tell you. Your tax bill or your tax are not going for a fixed-rate system to sustain that system. That system is all being sustained by the consumers of that system. So John, you want to discuss that again?
It's a great question.
I understand.
It's a, it's a, it's a great question, okay? If you start a system that is based on assessment base, okay, and the reality of it is that the amount of tax you pay is based on your assessment, okay? But that's not the way that utility works, whether it's electrical or water or sewer. What it is, is essentially the cost of servicing that particular entity, we can't discern as a tax-based would in terms of, you know, the differences of cost based on assessment. It really needs to be focused on the utility itself and what the costs for servicing you are, okay? And, you know, it allows as a separate element to focus on the utility. There's a, you know, when a tax base is arrived at, it's comprised of a plethora of different entities, okay? And it's easy, to be honest with you, to lose one of those important entities. So what this does is it focuses water on water, it focuses sewer on sewer, and storm on storm.
Okay, next question, please. Thank you. Mr. Cummings, it's been a long time. Don't come in, it's a, 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 it's
gets a break here, then that's gotta be correct.
Exactly. Uh, and I think we need to, to think, uh, as I said, uh, at the beginning, is that for those people who decided to conserve, and I think you heard Bob talk about the incredible value of water and its prices, we don't wanna create, in my opinion, a disincentive for people to go out and start to abuse water, when in actual fact, we all have to conserve more. So now, if you understand the conundrum, uh, that we're in, and we're gonna find that fair, fair and equitable model, uh, that respects the value of water, and that's why it's important to have this meeting in one of, on the 22nd, but also some of the other issues. Now, I can tell you, you don't want a thousand dollar bill added to your taxes to sustain water, because that's always the issue. Should it be sustained on your taxes? Or should we, in fact, have a rate-based system which essentially treats you as a customer, and you can decide how much water you use and not use? In fact, I can tell you the truth, some, some of us, when asked a question, because rates continue to go up at 7 or 8%, we, through our, uh, water department, through our engineering department, uh, through London Hydro, are finding, giving ways, are finding ways of how people can conserve another 10%. You wouldn't pay $1 more the last year bill, if in fact, you continue to respect water and find ways of being able to save water, even though the rate might be going up. So there are ways of being able to manage that expense, water, sewer, and, and storm, and we're looking at ways, including new technology, how we operate our system, to make sure that we're getting the best value possible, but a very, very good question.
But, uh, user fee is just a tariff by another name.
Sure, but you control it, though. You can control how much power you use and how much water you use. Taxes pay for a number of, 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 of certain services that sometimes are not based on what you use. A lot of people have suggested that perhaps maybe we are under garbage, garbage collection is, is an example. We know that it costs on average $65 to $70 per household, per year, to pick up your garbage. Some people are suggesting that perhaps maybe we ought to say, try and control it, or that we ought to charge per bag or per whatever. So there are certain things that we provide you, that you in fact can determine how much of it you need. Water and power is two, just two of those particular things.
John, just that, that was on the, on the conservation act. Uh, I mentioned in, in the presentation that we, we have focused traditionally, historically, on the decontamination, definding, and reducing our leaks, because we see that as a direct expense. But, uh, but we will be, uh, in, inside of the, the new processes, identifying exactly how to, to, uh, to, or what subsidy we might, which to offer in terms of those that we should continue to conserve, okay?
We're gonna take these last three questions, uh, because when we six o'clock, I think that that was our question. Next question.
Hi, I'm John, I have that contact information. I was wondering, do you think it could be easier to certain types of offspring or stuff, you know, for water people, and maybe you kind of, would it have possibly fluoride in the water?
That's very interesting. We're not getting into that subject wholly, okay? We're not getting into the subject of fluoride. This is strictly for the... Okay, thanks very much. Go ahead and ask a question.
I cost $68 a week. Um, I just got a little bit of an app here. So in an average month, I use about one to two cubic meters, uh, per month of water. Um, say one cubic meter is about $20 per cubic meter. Uh, one month, I use four, uh, cubic meters, which costs me $26, so it's $2 more for three more cubic meters. Uh, but if you apply that, that's about a dollar sixty-three per cubic meter for one. But if I was using that one rate at $20, so for me, using four cubic meters, I'm looking at $80 per month. So obviously, I only have that $5 minimal, minimal charge, but someone like me, serving water, you know, every day, you know, as an ongoing actor, why should I be charged, charged $20 a cubic meter essentially, whereas people who are using four, five, six, or only paying $6 a cubic meter?
Um, just, let me talk to you about the value of water, okay? Because the value of water is what's integral with this process, okay? I'm assuming that there's a fire hazard near your home.
Fire hazard, right?
Fire protection. Well, then would be fire protection, fire for your home in the context of the city of London. Uh, and, uh, and the reality of it is, is that cost associated with provision of at least even only that element is not being made up with the amount that you can from, from money. And so, you know, it's, 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 those are the things that, that go into, uh, understanding and ensuring that we are providing a good value. You know, I hear you, John, through your constitution act, uh, and, uh, and I think that that's commendable. And, uh, what I'd like to say to you is thank you for doing that, because it has saved us a lot of money, and that, there's no doubt about it. But, um, the same context, I'd like to offer you another example, uh, for a homeowner that has four children, okay? So the average is gonna be higher than what we would see as our average. Now, our, our rate structure, we're talking about unfairness, okay? That home could have put in place all the water preserving and conserving efforts that it may have, you know, new go flush toilets, uh, shower heads, uh, a new washer, or, or that, that utilizes probably 10% of what their, it's about 20, 20% of what the, the old original ones that we had here still. That family has put great efforts into conservation, but it's not being recognized, because of the sheer numbers that are in that household, we're, 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 you know, that there's a, there's a significant inequity there. So those are the things that we're trying to bring out through this cost to service issue.
Thank you. Next question, last question.
Yeah, I will. Um, Bob Dowdell's, uh, talk, he said, we're living in a closed system, you know, I'm saying, which is our water is all pollutants. So what are you doing to address the companies that are living our water in London, I would like? The companies, like mostly big industries that are doing this, and, you know, what our elected councillors are doing to address this source, you know, of pollution? And you mentioned, there's a, like you said, 40% ICI, right? They, they're paying to, uh, system and, uh, 60% is paying for the residential. What's this one? I don't understand your thinking there, because fairness is elementary, couldn't you just raise their taxes there a little bit?
Well, we, we have raised, but it's, uh, but, you know, I have a very good question, okay? But the issue that, uh, that, that we need to, to worry about is the cost of actually servicing that industry, or the cost of servicing that, that, that residential homeowner, the case may be. And you're right, right now, the industrial consumers use 4, 60%, 60% of the, of the, the volume of water that we produce, absolutely. But that, that variable cost that I talked about, is the infrastructure cost that was between 70 and 80% of our system costs, our fixed costs.
So they pay for cubic, or cubic meter, right?
So they pay for cubic meters well, but the, the, the new model, and I'm not gonna suggest there's not inequities within the current model, we've addressed those, you see. But in a real sense, what we need to, to look at is what the cost of servicing is to that particular industry. And if the costs for servicing for that particular industry are less, and are less to service an industry that, you know, and, uh, and if, and we often want to fairly associate those costs for the industry to the industry, for the residential to the residential, so that nobody, uh, gets any, 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 any forms of, of, of benefit from one use group or the other.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, it's a pollution, oh, that's, it's a great question. I'm jealous, because you're absolutely right, there are pollutions that are, that are going on, and right now, we have what we call Source Water Protection Act, okay? The Source Water Protection Act is a significant act with significant strength. It has, uh, it, and it looks at all pollutants, essentially, that, that all pollutant sources, okay? At this point in time, it's only looking at pollutants and where they start. And we started the process of managing pollutants into our system by first identifying where they are, and then identifying what kind of systems that we have to, to manage. But we're gonna see some costs associated to that in the, in the near future, okay? Those costs at this point in time are not being addressed.
Right?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to know that you...
Thank you, Harold. That, that comes, this is the group, including yourself. Oh, that's the, the... Thank you very much. In fact, let me, uh, recognize council, before you're going over to the, you have the introductions, and as you said, Harold, uh, you know, Levens, Councilman, this is here. That's how important this particular question is, and, you know, this is, uh, between now and October the 22nd, when Harold's Committee Civic Works will be, uh, looking at the options, uh, that are presented, uh, that's partly the purpose of this meeting, was to essentially also hear from you. We wanna make sure that between now and then, if you go to our website, that you'll be able to see the presentation that John laid. You can see, it's not an easy decision. Uh, there are some difficult decisions that, uh, council will have to make. Uh, your input is not, has not only been important, but will be important, so any ideas, any suggestions, uh, you please write them to Julian at, uh, london.ca. Julian is our, is our good guy here. Um, and so, uh, we'll take those questions, we'll get the answers for you. This is, uh, and on, on October 22nd, I can't remember if that's a public participation meeting, or just a presentation?
Yeah, just a presentation.
It'll be a presentation to, uh, to council. I think we need a public participation meeting in the future with regards to the rate increases in November, so there will be, again, opportunity, but we wanna hear from you, and we're gonna try and get, uh, more substantive answers if we didn't answer the questions that were posed to us today, uh, posted, so that you'll get those, uh, particular questions. But, uh, as you can see, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an important issue. I think Bob told us how precious our water is to the world, how precious our water is here. There's no doubt that London has done very well compared to other municipalities in the province, in terms of its rates, in terms of its infrastructure, but we are looking for your input to decide and determine how it is that we're gonna create that, uh, sustainable model. There's no doubt that we will have, add a fixed portion, and there's no doubt that the variable piece, which now represents 99% of the cost, and 11% is, is on a, on a fixed rate basis, uh, then obviously, that's what, uh, council will have to discuss. So I wanna thank you, John, and everyone of you for taking the time. I hope you found it informative, and again, uh, thank you very much for taking the interest, and we look forward to your...
Is there any help?
Thank you.